Close enough for government work. Any come to order? All stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Anybody had a chance to look at the agenda?
I want to deal with the request first.
Ah, we might as well. We have a request from Mr. Stamke to table his application. Do I have a motion to table?
Make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
That modifies the agenda?
With that, I will make a motion to accept the agenda as modified.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then it's the last meeting. Anybody had a chance to look at them?
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Scott?
Okay, the first item on the agenda tonight is a variance request from Mr. Joseph Jalina. He is requesting a 35-foot front setback variance for addition to an existing storied building. The property is located in Lake and Stream zoning district. There is a 40-foot front setback requirement from the high-water mark in this zoning district. Mr. Jalina requests to have the addition, which has already been placed up, remain five feet from the high-water mark. Thus requiring the 35-foot variance from the 40-foot requirement.
Mr. Jalina? You got anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, did everybody get my original letter?
Everybody's got your letter. Everybody, I hope, has been out to the site, okay, seen the property.
I would just like to say that, again, I'm not trying to skirt any zoning or anything. And this was a, we actually own property just around the corner in Pigeon Bay. And we've voted by this property 15 years now. And every time I go by it, my wife says, "We just stopped saying that, but somebody ought to take this and redo it. It's history." And for 15 years, nobody did. So apparently, my wife got tired of me saying it. And last fall, said, "Why don't you buy it?" So first year, I did. I have been in close work with the building department. They've been out to our site at least 10 times. Nobody mentioned anything about any of this. I contacted them. I discussed specifically size that I needed to do for things. I met all the requirements. And one day, they come out and said, "Oh, no, you need a building permit for that because it's attached." And that extends the footprint of it, which, which they would have mentioned before, but they didn't. Then, I submitted everything to them. About a week later, I called, and they stated, "Oh, you need a zoning permit too," which was actually, I knew that. We halted things, so it is not completed. And I called Scott, and he came out and looked at it, and we filled out the paperwork and that situation, and I'm here.
You say it's not completed yet?
It is not 100% completed yet, no. We stopped this.
What more do you have to do to it?
There's a little bit of support structures that we have to do. If anybody was out there, they see we still have bracing on it. There is a little bit of eve work that needs to be done on the north side, no, south side, to make sure that it's all boxed in properly. We're probably going to have to put screening underneath the trusses so that birds and that don't get up in there. And then we have landscaping to do around it.
Okay. Anything else?
Not pertaining to that, if you read all my information.
I assume everybody has, they were provided with it.
Okay. I have additional pictures if you need a big ones.
Anybody need additional pictures? Been out there, you have a good idea what's there. Sliding down your hill there.
Yeah.
Snow and slush.
It's a steep one.
Yep. Have any public comments? Not closed in public? Discussion? You want my discussion?
Always ready.
Okay. As Mr. Jalina brought out in his letter, and you noticed by being out there, the cabins on the property are some distance from the water and located on the top of a hill. He's indicating that the use of the cabins is rental to families during the summertime and that children would be playing down there on the beach. Not much beach there, but...
You can get in the water and walk right in.
Get in the water. There isn't really any place for parents to supervise their children on that piece of property unless they're down there right by the water. If they're trying to keep track of kids from those cabins, it'd be hard pressed to get there if anything did happen. The shelter is an extension of that existing cement block building that's already there. And it's not extending any closer to the water line than the building that's already there. So those are some observations I had. Does anybody else want to bring out anything else?
My question would be, what's your plans in the future about enclosing it?
We're not planning on enclosing it.
Okay, the back wall that's on it, when you're facing it from the water? Is that just temporary, or are you going to leave it there?
No, that, if you look at some of the pictures where the hill comes down...
Right.
Okay, where it came down there, it dropped off dramatically.
Right.
And so what we did is we put that wall there because as somebody, and I don't know who, would come down, they would come down rather rapidly, and the roof was right there. So the object was to prevent people from running down that sharp spot. So we just put that three-foot wall there. And we actually backfilled behind there to make it flat because we're going to put some little shrubs along there so that people can't jump over it.
Right.
It's there actually more for protection so people don't run into the roof.
Good.
It's a retaining wall.
Yeah, it's a retaining wall, basically. But we didn't dig it out, we actually backfilled it.
I thought maybe it was for erosion purposes or something.
Well, it helps for that, too.
Yeah.
Okay, any other observations? With that, I'm going to add some of my comments as findings, the general findings. It'd be number 5-4, actually. Property is steeply sloped to the water. Number 5, the existing building is illegal, non-conforming structure. 6, the additional addition will be no closer to the water than the existing structure. I think that's about it. With that, we can go on to the, I could possibly add those as the, to the general findings and objections to that.
Objection.
Now, let's go on to 23-5-4. A dimensional variance may be granted by the zoning board of appeals only in cases where the applicant demonstrates in official record of public hearing that practical difficulty exists by showing all of the following. 23-5-4-1, that the need for the requested variance is due to unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property involved such as narrowness, shallowness, shape, water, or topography, and is not due to the applicant's personal or economic difficulty.
Keep 1 straight, 2.
Standard has or has not been met?
Has.
Has?
Has.
Has been met. 23-5-4-2, that the need for the requested variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners, i.e. self-created.
Keep 1, strike 2.
Standard has or has not been met?
Has.
Has been met. 23-5-4-3, that strict compliance with regulations governing area setback, frontage, height, bulk, density, or other dimensional requirements will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome.
Keep 1, strike 2.
Standard has or has not been met?
Has.
Has been met. 23-5-4-4, that the requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to grant the applicant reasonable relief as well as to do substantial justice to property owners in the district.
Keep 1, strike 2.
Standard has or has not been met?
Has.
Has been met. 23-5-4-5, that the requested variance will not cause an adverse impact on surrounding property, property values, or the use and enjoyment of property in the neighborhood or zoning district.
Keep 1, strike 2.
Standard has or has not been met?
Has.
Has been met. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to grant the variance based on the general findings and the specific findings of 23.5.4.1 through 23.5.4.5.
All support. All in favor?
Aye.
You're good to go.
Thank you.
Scott?
Okay, the final item on the agenda is a request from Anthony Capola for a nine-foot front setback variance. This property is located in a residential zoning district. A 30-foot front setback, or the setback can grow right away, is required in that zoning district. Mr. Capola wishes to place a new line 21 feet from the front property line, thus requiring a nine-foot variance from the 30-foot front setback requirement.
Right there. I can give you a little bit of background of my project. Previously, I had a mobile home on that property with an addition added onto it, a wraparound deck, and a roof over the whole structure. Hey, that structure was almost 10 feet in front of the front-back set line. That's how we purchased the property. A tree fell on it a little over a year ago, which is what initiated us to replace it. So that structure has now been removed, and so this is the building that me and my wife would like to replace it with, the three-bedroom, two-story, two-bath home. As you can see in my plan there, the restrictions of the existing garage and cement driveway as well as the existing septic field reduces my envelope of where I can build a house. And so that's why I'm asking for a variance. Other homes on the street, there's at least three other properties on the same side of the street that their structures are also across the front setback line, so this would not be something that's sticking out by itself and out of the ordinary for that area.
Okay. Anything else?
Not unless anybody has specific questions for me.
I will get to that if there are. Okay, public comment? No public comment? Closed in public. Discussion? I get to discuss again? Okay. Am I looking at the proposed building? The footprint of the proposed house is 1,796.95 square feet. If that front nine feet that it extends into the front setback were cut off, it would reduce the footprint by 363 square feet. If you look at the lot, there's 12 feet from the right side of the building, proposed building, to the driveway. And there's 23 feet to the property line on the other side, which leaves, oh, it's 10-foot side setback on that, or eight?
Eight.
Eight. So you've got 25 feet to the setback on the left-hand side, which gives plenty of room to have a building of the requested 1,796.95 square feet built on that property. It just wouldn't be square the way he's proposing. So, to me, it's a self-created problem. There's plenty of room to build a house the same size he wants and still need setbacks. Any other discussion?
Do you have any comments on changing the wall?
I don't know if you were able to get out to the property, but along, as I'm looking at right now, the left-hand side, I have some large trees, trees over there, which I do not want to cut anymore down. Putting a wider house would require me to do that. I also want to still allow access to get around to the building if I ever needed equipment in to service the septic field because the back property line is fenced. So, you know, that's why I'm placing the house where it is and why I'm trying to keep it a narrower house, too.
Well, you've got about 10 feet from the... You've got 10 feet from that corner to a line from the old building there. 10 feet plus a foot or so on the other side gives you plenty, the same amount of square footage that you're proposing for your building. And you can still get through here.
I'd have to measure between my states to confirm that.
No, I was out there. That's what I was looking at.
A future project I would like to do, if possible, would be to make that pole barn larger, which would be extending off the front of it by another eight feet, which would then align the house and the pole barn side by side. And there would not be a 10-foot gap in there anymore.
You wouldn't have any gap in there even with this. You'd have a two-foot gap, so you'd have no access to get through there anyway.
That's why I want to keep the far side open.
Well, but you're already eliminating your argument for getting through, if your trees are on the far side, which is the left-hand side.
No, there's a, with that floor plan right there, there is an eight-to-10-foot gap between that and the trees.
But what I'm saying is, if you brought it over to the right, 10 feet...
Bring it two feet away from the driveway.
Two feet away from the driveway, that's correct. There's no restriction on that.
Other than I don't want the house right on top of the driveway.
That's your...
I mean, I'm trying to...
Your problem.
I'm trying to put a house in place that meets my needs, our family's needs. It's no doubt going to increase the property values in the area. If you've been down Harold B. Street, majority of the properties have pole barns on them. They're storage lots. I'm trying to put a nice home in there that meets our family needs. Believe me, I'd love to build it within the restrictions. That's the floor plan we like that works for us. And that's how I can get it fit in there. My previous structure was already nine and a half feet over, so I'm really not changing anything there.
But once it's torn down, there's no basis to put it back up if it's non-conforming.
Hey, the home, the place next to us, there's a pole barn he's over. The next two homes behind, beyond him, they're over. I did include a picture in my application that should be in the folder. Looking down the 30-foot setback line, you can see the neighboring properties. You can see their buildings are out in front of it.
I've got an aerial photo here if you're looking at it. There's the entire neighborhood with the subject property in yellow.
And that's the existing building that was there that I removed.
This building here?
Yes. And the new building, although it'll stick, it's a larger building, so it'll be more of it to the left. It won't stick out any further forward to the road than what that previous building did, which you can see is aligned with all the other property, all the other buildings there.
Do you have a figure on the, how close those next three or four houses are to the road, Scott?
Yeah, the right-of-way doesn't overlay correctly. You can actually, I took a couple of measurements on here, and the right-of-way is right along this point. You can kind of see where there's some growth and a ditch area there and right along this line as well. So the front setback line is actually right about here, coming into this house, as I recall, is, I think, 20, 25 feet away. And so you can kind of gauge that among the rest of them here. Your front line is right along this, this line here.
And it looks like the one next door is the closest one.
Yeah, I remember right, they're all pretty, pretty close in lines. Porch area here, whatever that is, maybe a little closer. Yep.
Well, thoughts on it?
Well, we routinely allow them to move to where the neighbors are.
Right. Well, he's, the average of the next two on either side, and there's nobody on the left side. I would go along with the next couple on the other side, which would be to the right, if that's 25 feet.
Seems like that's what I recall, but, you know, you could certainly make your variance for that there.
Well, if we just stayed a bit more closer than neighboring...
Neighboring properties to the front setback line.
There's alignment that can be gauged.
Even if you can't figure out where the road is, if you go by the...
Must be in line with the neighbor.
Where the closest structural part to the...
Right. Would you be willing to go along with that?
Well, I'm, if I have to push that house, my proposed house, any further back, then I have to move my septic field. Because I've, there's a 10-foot requirement of the building from the septic field, and that's where I have the house placed right now.
Well, you would have several options. You could either keep the house the same configuration, or you could change the footprint of the house and widen it out and bring it back. And if we're talking about the difference between a five-foot variance and a nine-foot variance, you've got four feet.
Right.
You'd have to take the thing out to either side, one side of the other, or two feet off of either side, or three feet off of one and couple off the other.
I think the placement may be the same. Were you, were you planning to extend out farther than your neighbor's house?
No.
Okay.
You know, visually, when I stand, it looks like my structure would not be any further than the neighbor's house.
Okay, because that's, at least what I'm talking, is let you line up to that as you're looking at it on the picture, your neighbor on the right. You can line up to the front of his house.
I mean, you can look at it right there, though, you know, my building...
I understand. I'm just, the question is, the, what we're looking at on the drawing and where, in fact, your property line versus the road are. It's simple for everybody to say, "You may line up to the front of your neighbor's house and no further." Then we don't care what the measurement is?
Okay. And so which neighbor's house are you referring to?
Your next-door neighbor on the right?
Immediate neighbor to the right, as you're looking at that photo. Or left as you're looking at, you're in the road looking at your house.
My estimation, he's only one or two foot across the front setback. It's, the house is next to him on the other side. That picture doesn't really line up. I know it's an overhead satellite picture. When you stand on the property and look at the, look at the lines out front, the next two homes clearly stick out fr, and that's actually a pole barn next to me, that's not a house. They actually stick out much further than that one does.
Well, we were able to go with your neighbors. Since there is no structure to the left, looking at the photo, we have nothing to go to other than what the setback is. We're allowed to average what those are.
So you say neighbors, does that mean the next three houses?
No.
No. One on either side of you.
One on either side, so one, so that pole barn is...
Yeah, this, this one doesn't exist, so if we look at the building next to yours, I can justify allowing you to build to that line. Wherever, whatever his wall closest to the road is, that can become your front wall.
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, now, if you were talking another foot, if you turn your house 90 degrees, you gain the foot because you're a foot off the square.
I turned the house 90 degrees, the front faces the driveway now.
It's where you put the walls inside. You can move them around slightly.
You don't have a house there right now. You can build a house any shape you want. You're proposing almost a square house. You could have a rectangular house there and have the same number of square feet in.
Yeah, well, square feet is really irrelevant. It's the way the rooms are laid out and functionally how it works.
Well...
I can build a pole barn in there and just hang sheets, too. I understand what you're saying, I'm fine.
The question is, are you willing to go along with that, or do we treat your request exactly as it is, and it's going to be an up or down vote on that, the way you're proposing? Or do you want to accept something less than that and go with the offset that your neighbor has to the right there?
Whatever you'll give me. I guess I'll have to work with that.
Well, if you're willing to go along with it, we'll, we'll treat that as your request at this point in time.
We'll go with the neighbors.
Okay. So we'll have to modify this to the applicant, number three there, the applicant is seeking a variance to allow the front setback to align with the neighbor to the...
East.
I mean, the east?
It's the east, yeah.
To the east? And four is going to be irrelevant. It's going to be whatever that distance is.
Yeah, I have two number threes here on mine.
Yeah, there are two there, so, four would be, or that would be number five, that would be irrelevant.
Five is irrelevant, right?
Four is changed, correct?
Four is changed to that, what he's, the applicant's agreed to go with. Okay, with that change, 23-5-4, dimensional variance may be granted by zoning board of appeals only in cases where the applicant demonstrates in the official record of public hearing that practical difficulty exists by showing all of the following. 23-5-4-1, that the need for the requested variance is due to unique circumstances or physical conditions of property involved such as narrowness, shallowness, shape, water, or topography, and is not due to the applicant's personal or economic difficulty.
Keep 1, strike 2.
Standard has or has not been met?
Has.
Has.
Has been met. 23-5-4-2, that the need for the requested variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners, i.e. self-created.
Keep 1, strike 2.
Standard has or has not been met?
Has.
Has been met. 23-5-4-3, that strict compliance with regulations governing area setback, frontage, height, bulk, density, or other dimensional requirements will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome.
Keep 1, strike 2.
Standard has or has not been met?
Has.
Has been met. 23-5-4-4, that the requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to grant the applicant reasonable relief as well as to do substantial justice to other property owners in the district.
Keep 1, strike 2.
Standard has or has not been met?
Has.
Has been met.
Make a motion to grant it.
Wait, we've got 23-5-5.
Oh.
Get too far. 23-5-5, that the requested variance will not cause an adverse impact on surrounding... will not cause an adverse impact on surrounding property, property values of the use and enjoyment of property in the neighborhood or zoning district.
And we should rewrite the description there.
Yeah. Uh... Granting the variance to allow the front setback to align with the next-door neighbor to the east will not cause...
With that, keep one, strike two.
Standard has or has not been met?
Has.
Has.
Has been met.
I'll make the motion. Grant the variance based on the general findings and the specific findings of twenty-three-point-five-point-four-point-one through twenty-three-point-five-point-four-point-five.
Awesome. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You've got that. Okay, thank you. Okay, unfinished business. I think Mr. Stender-Stemke is the only one with unfinished business, and that subject I plan on bringing up to the planning commission at the next meeting. I think there's a problem there that needs to be addressed, and that's the place, I think, really, for it to be addressed.
I concur.
New business? Collection of officers? And anyone wishes to be appointed as the chairman?
I make motion to appoint, cut.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Secretary?
Can do vice chair.
Vice chair. Yeah, we'll get the vice chair first.
I can't appoint myself.
No, vice chair, we have a vice chair now. John, you're sitting there trying not to say it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and secretary?
I'm not with Mr. Dobbsy.
Any support?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Take care of that. ZBA comments?
Are we going to keep the...
Oh, the meeting schedule.
Yeah, there, there are no conflicts based on my review, so I would recommend you adopt the same regular schedule.
Be forth Tuesday. So moved.
All support? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, same schedule. ZBA comments?
Just pertinent to the Stemke case, that should be addressed at the planning commission level.
Will be done. Any other comment?
I will be a chair?
No.
No.
Public comments? If not, most is public. Oh, Steve?
Representatives here at the township board for the lower township, we were here to listen to your discussion on the Andy Stemke request. And it's our township's position, and we would support them and their continued rental of that facility. So, that's why the three of us are here.
I'd like to add something, is that, you know, it's very unusual, first of all, even to check into them or to, to confront them on the rentals. As we know, in this county, there's thousands of them probably are doing the same thing. And you picked out the one from the lower that did it and tried to restrict it. I know it's got to go to the planning board, it's pretty unacceptable by our board, you know, that, you know, it's going to be this far. It's a, it's a, it's a poor planning issue, no doubt in my mind, and it has to be seriously addressed.
I agree.
Yeah, so we'll be at your planning commission.
Unfortunately, the sign in the front yard is probably what triggered the enforcement action.
Well, it isn't just that. I mean, I, I mean, you can go on the internet and find all your issues.
Absolutely, absolutely, but as people from planning and zoning and building are driving around, when they see a sign in the front yard, it kind of says, "Hmm."
Yeah, but that didn't happen. You got to complain on that, you didn't get no from the sign.
No.
I don't know where they got it.
Let me give you a little background here. The management here, Steve and Scott, have been following the, what is it, the vacation rental by owner...
HRBO website.
Website, and contacting anyone that's advertised rentals in the, I don't know whether it's just Lake and Stream or whether it covered anyone else.
Most of them are in Lake and Stream, but Steve's closer to that issue than I am currently.
But, in any event, they were, he was contacting them and letting them know that it was illegal by our regulations, the way he's interpreting them. Evidently, most of them have complied with that and backed off rentals. Mr. Stemke evidently decided to bring it to someone's attention officially. He chose to come to the ZBA. I'm happy that he withdrew that from the ZBA, in that that would have just been a single case. I think this is a question that should be addressed countywide, rather than one single rental house. I'm not going to go into the way I feel about it, but I had first become aware of the fact that Steve Schnell was doing this two meetings ago, two planning commission meetings ago. And I'd planned on bringing it up at the next planning commission meeting, which unfortunately I couldn't get to because my driveway was an ice skating rink. So, I was going to bring it up at the next one, which is the first Wednesday of next month, and which I still intend to do. But Mr. Stemke's case here is, is just something that's bringing it to a head, and it's something that's going to have to be addressed.
You're going to probably have to change some portion of relating to state zoning and stuff.
Well, either we're... The decision is going to have to be made, and I, I feel it should be made, opened up the comment by everybody in the county.
Correct.
As to whether short-term rentals are going to be authorized, or the people want to have them authorized or not. Now, if the consensus is that people don't want to see short-term rentals of, of homes in Lake and Stream or any other zoning district, then we'll have to get, get to that, find a consensus. Then the planning commission's going to have to come up to change, changes in the regulations if that's indicated, and it's going to have to go to the board commissioners, and either they'll approve it or they won't approve it. So, that's where we are right now.
I just feel, I'm just freaking my mind, you know, you're, you're starting to restrict more and more and more, and it's hampering, you know, terrorism, the buying and selling of property in the county of Chaboygan. I mean, you're, you're making it difficult for people to want to, want to come to our county. I mean, it's just, it's coming to that point right now. I mean, and then, and the worst part about it, you don't, you don't have an enforcement department that will enforce anything that you are putting in effect. So, it's getting, getting negative and more negative, you know? There's people out there that are basically struggling. If they can rent their property for three months, two months, and, and make their tax payments, that's great. You'll be more income to the county, but we'll see what happens at the planning.
And that's why I'm going to bring it up.
Needs to be legalized under the order.
Yeah. In, in, in our area, Muller Lake, where the beginning of the lake is, good God, I mean, I, I know of a thousand places that they rent, that are owners like me, that, I mean, look at the landings for crying out loud, and look at where it used to be Murdoch's, and, I mean, that this is, this has been there since the thirties. This isn't something new.
That's a different situation.
Right. What we're specifically talking about is people taking what otherwise is a single-family dwelling.
Oh, 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 okay. You know, explain that. Yes, yes. These are...
Not talking about, these are...
Chicken cans and things like that, or these cabins that were... Oh, okay, I'm sorry, that wasn't explained at the beginning. Wait a minute.
No, this is, this is people taking their private residences and renting them out for a period of time in the summertime or any other time, in winter time, whatever. And that's what's brought it to a head. Decision's been made that it's illegal by our regulations, the way they're written, and they're trying to enforce it. So, now the question is, if it is illegal, if it is in fact illegal by our regulation the way it's written, then do we want to change the regulation? And that's going to be, have to be...
It would encompass a little bit more than that, anything that was, was not grandfathered in before nineteen eighty-three, right? If it was built after eighty-three, it would have...
If they were grandfathered in, they're exempt.
Right, but it, but it could be cabins that were built after eighty-three. It's really any rentals.
Well, it depends. There's a number of different things that... If they were, if it was a motel or a hotel, if it was designated as that, which would be something open for more than one person to rent for short periods of time, those things are authorized in many of the areas that we're looking at. But they're authorized with a special use permit. They're not a use by right. A single-family dwelling in the Lake and Stream Protection District is a use by right. In other words, you have the right in Lake and Stream to own a single-family home. Now, the question is whether you can then rent that single-family home for short periods of time. Well, the criteria that's being used to determine whether that is or is not legal is some kind of a decision made someplace in the legal hierarchy that thirty days or more is legal. Thirty days or less, which they determine as a short-term rental, is not legal. Now, that's an interpretation that I don't know that you're going to get a consensus on, but that's the way it's being interpreted here, and that's the way it's being enforced. Now, the question is whether that's going to continue or not, but that's what brought up the Stemke case.
And I will say, like, in regards to VRBO, I don't think all the people on VRBO were, sent a letter. I think just a relatively few were. There's hundreds on there. I went on there today, and there was two-hundred-and-sixty-two, I think, advertising just for Chaboygan. And I think in my last conversation with Steve, it was less than a couple dozen that were sent letters. And I was...
Well, they've got this response already, so if he keeps doing it, then...
Right, I agree.
And whatever's good for one should be good for all. So, it's a, it's a problem that has to be addressed.
It'd be very difficult.
But I don't think here's the place to address it, one, one case at a time.
Right, I, I agree, it'd be very difficult to enforce also. The sign, obviously, brought attention to it, that was a mistake. I'll admit that. But to that point, I mean, there's dozens of websites, new ones popping up every day where people are advertising. The state of Michigan has their Michigan.org where they advertise rentals on pure Michigan. And we can put, we can put our site on there if they encourage it. And so, it's, it would be very difficult to enforce somebody who'd have to spend, I mean, that would be their job.
Well, I've talked to legal counsel on this several times now, on this particular case. Evidently, Michigan is fairly unique in the way they treat rental properties. In Florida, they say, "Do you want to rent it? Go ahead and rent it." But then, they tax it as a rental commercial property the minutes you start renting it. So, evidently, most states do loosen it up and allow rentals, but they catch you some other way and get their pound of flesh that way.
It's a yearly fire inspection that could kill that.
But Michigan, it's not, is, in my mind, it's not really pinned down. And it's being treated, Acme Township has got it up for a vote right now, open to the entire populace, voting on whether they're going to allow short-term rentals. It's come up in a number of other townships around the, especially around this area. So, there's, it can be handled either way, and it's going to be a question of which way we're going to handle it. But that eventually is going to have to go to the board commissioners for a final determination. Do I have any comments from the board commissioner's side there, Tony?
No comment, no comment.
I think you said that in the last couple of meetings, I've been, "No comment."
Okay, any other comments? It's really a discussion outside of our purview, but I think it's valuable, and I'd like to see you all at the planning commission meeting.
As long as you're all here, I do have a question. On this forty-foot strip from the water line...
Right.
They talk about permanent structures. I want to put a fire pit down there, one of these fire pit rings?
That's okay.
That's fine. Okay, can I do some little landscape around it, like...
You can landscape around it, but the minute you build a permanent structure...
Permanent structure, okay.
Then you're, that forty-foot is going to...
Okay, all right. Because it is, it doesn't say that anywhere, so I thought I'd ask.
Anything that falls under the definition of a structure would be regulated from that and kind of that setback.
Okay, any other comments? I welcome all the comments.
Now it's Ralph's turn.
Want to make your motion?
Go, Ralph, yeah.
Yeah, he's a jury.